Right, good morning and I would like to welcome everyone who is present in the council chamber and all those watching online to this meeting of the Health Scrutiny Committee for Lincolnshire. For those of us in the chamber, there is no fire drill plan this morning. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, we need to leave the council chamber through the rear doors, through reception and assemble in the car park at the front of the building and await further instructions. I would also request all members to place their phones on silent and to ensure everyone has the opportunity to ask a question, please ask a maximum of two questions per item and to keep these succinct and concise. I would like to remind you all that your comments will remain accessible online. I'd now like to move into agenda item one, apologies for absence and replacement members, Jess.
Thank you, Chairman. We've received apologies from councillor Sarah Parkin, Paul Martin, Mark Allen and Charmaine Morgan. We've also received apologies from the Health Watch representative, Liz Ball. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move into agenda item two, declarations of members' interest. This is an opportunity for members of the committee to declare any pecuniary or other interests. Do members have any interests to declare? Councillor Kendrick, please.
Thank you, Chairman. My usual one, I'm a stakeholder governor of LPFT.
Okay, thank you. I'll then move on to agenda item three, the minutes, please. This is to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 9th of October 2024 as a correct record. They are found on pages three to 15 of the agenda pack and as the committee has had the opportunity to read these in advance, I plan on taking these and block. Do I have a proposer? Councillor Mackinson Saunders, seconded by councillor Cleaver. All those in favour, please show. Any abstentions and any against? Got your mark down, thank you. That's supported. We'll now move on to agenda item four, the chairman's announcements. My announcements were circulated as part of the agenda and are on pages 17 to 19 of the pack. My supplementary announcements were circulated via email on the 5th of November, so does anyone have any questions or statements? Any major discussions, we will pick up in the work item. Councillor Smith, please.
Thank you, Chairman. It's not a question, it's a statement and a comment, really. In the last week, I was helping, in my role that I have for Sherwood Lee, I was helping one of his constituents and, Chairman, it was quite a tragic case. Luckily, it's been put on a level keel now, but the response from statutory services in this case, from police to mental health, has been absolutely woeful and it very seriously could have cost this gentleman his life. Thankfully, it didn't, but this just reiterates what I said when we had the suicide strategy before as chairman, that there's a lot of talk, but actually, when you get to the ground and you get to the nitty gritty, there are too many, and there are others as well, but especially men falling through the crack and the gaps, and this needs to stop because otherwise, Chairman, if I hadn't have done what I did last week, that gentleman wouldn't be here with us anymore, I'm pretty sure of it, and thankfully he is because he's a good man and he's done a lot for people. So we really need to do what we can to ensure that the system actually works as it's intended because frankly, Chairman, at the minute, it isn't working at all in my experience when I've been helping various individuals, both in my ward and further afield in the county. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Smith. I would say I think it's always best to make a complaint if they're willing to because I think if you don't get it into the system, then lessons don't get learned, but thank you very much for those comments. Councillor Mackinson Saunders.
On page 19, Mr. Chairman, the national public engagement exercise, the move from hospital to community will see plans for neighbourhood health centres. Well, I think they're good ideas and we have a really, really excellent, and I hope the ladies are listening, urgent treatment centre that should be open for 24 hours a day in Louth, but how, when family doctors are private businesses, can this be achieved? Please.
Thank you. Simon, do you want to come in on this point?
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. I think if councillor Mackinson Saunders could perhaps hold that question until the December meeting, when we do have GP provision on the committee's agenda, including the representative from the local medical committee, if that's okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that's lovely. Just remind me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the chairman's announcements? No, in which case do I have a proposer that these noted? Thank you, and seconded councillor Smith. All those in favour, please show. Thank you, they're noted. In which case we'll now move into agenda item five, the Lincolnshire Integrated Care System Winter Plan. This item was circulated as part of the agenda pack on pages 21 to 50 and I'd like to welcome our presenters from NHS Lincolnshire's Integrated Care Board, Claire Raybold, Executive Director for System Delivery, Rebecca Nino, Deputy Director for System Delivery, and Rebecca Fieldsend, ICB Lead for Emergency and Urgent Care. If I can hand over to you just to navigate us through the report for about 10, 15 minutes and questions after, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to very helpfully pass to my colleague Rebecca, so Rebecca is our winter director for this year, a role that she also undertook last year successfully, so Rebecca's going to take you through the plan.
Thank you very much, Claire, and thank you, everybody. As Claire said, I will be undertaking the role of winter director for Lincolnshire this year. So the plan itself has been shared with you all. I don't intend to go into huge depth, I'll just briefly walk through it, so there's opportunity for you to ask us questions. As Claire said, this is a system plan, so this isn't just a health plan, this is a local authority, social care and all of our partners' plans to come together to keep patients as safe as we can during the winter period. The plan, for those of you that were here last year, looks, I think you'll notice, very similar to last year in its layout. We were commended for that last year and we've passed to share our plan across the Midlands region with other systems for learning, so just to say that from the beginning. The plan itself takes a risk-based approach, as you can see, you will be aware of some of the risks remain the same as last year, and I know we've talked about those risks here before, they're mainly around when people are waiting at various points within the NHS, but this year we've added three additional risks, one being, again, and I've heard you talk about this when I've been here, GP collective action, so the unknown entity of what that may or may look like, may or may not look like over the winter period, the fragility of some of our services on the east coast, and again, you've heard us talk about and colleagues talk about some of the workforce difficulties, the recruitment and retention issues we have over on the east coast particularly, and then finally, the risk of our public not knowing how to access our services at the best point in time. And again, we talked about some of that last time, didn't we, when we were here, talking about urgent treatment centres? And hopefully through the paper, you can see how we've tried to mitigate those three additional risks, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. So the paper tries to set out what winter might look like, and I use might because that is a really tricky prediction to make at this point in the year. What we can see already and what we've been told is it's very likely to look very similar to last winter. So what we saw last winter was rather than huge peaks in infectious diseases, we saw a cyclical approach, particularly to influenza and Covid, and we expect that to be the same. What that means is rather than lower levels of activity into higher levels of activity, we're planning for sustained activity at a higher level, so as I said, as of last year. What that means is prevention is the cornerstone of this winter plan and to take the opportunity while I'm here in the public domain, I just appeal to the people of Lincolnshire to think about that prevention and what they can do to help themselves. So vaccination is the best method of preventing illness in relation to flu and Covid, so if you are eligible and you haven't had your vaccination, please, please, please do go and access that, either through the national booking system, your local GP or your local pharmacy. Keeping people well and out of our services is clearly what we want for our population. However, people do get ill and they come into our services, so the remainder of the plan is around the sorts of schemes, sorts of services, sorts of work we're doing to try and ensure people can access and flow through our services as quickly as possible. And you'll see in the plan, they're broken down into five key areas, and I'm not going to talk through all the five key areas, but I thought probably I'll just bring three things out that we're doing, particularly to address some of the issues I've already said. So one of the things we've already done, actually, that's already in place, is we've integrated our clinical assessment service, so our staff from our community provider, actually into the call handling room that EMAS have at Bracebridge Heath, so there are now our local staff sat alongside our EMAS, emergency ambulance staff, helping to direct people who may well be calling 999 that don't need an ambulance response, but do need an urgent care response, so into some of those other services we've talked about, our urgent care response services. And that's something that went live a couple of weeks ago and is already showing great, great results because we all know individuals that require a 999 ambulance need that as quickly as possible and we need to make sure our resources are in the right place at the right time for individuals. I know later on, you have a session around patient transport, we have increased the number and availability of patient transport across the system during winter to help and ensure that individuals can get to appointments, but also primarily leave hospital as quickly as possible when they're being discharged. Flow through our acute hospitals is absolute paramount and anything that we can do that helps people leave quickly when they're fit to do so is something that we will do, and this is an example of one of those. One of the other schemes we're just in the process of putting into place is some additional support for those in mental health crisis over in Boston and on the east coast. You'll be aware, in Lincoln, we have a NUAC, a mental health assessment unit, trying not to use acronyms, the Mental Health Assessment Unit at Lincoln. We don't have the same provision over in Boston and of course, it would be lovely, wouldn't it, if we could just build something really quickly and create something in that way? That obviously isn't feasible for winter, so we're trialling a different methodology over in the Boston area based in the community, but that will help prevent those people who are in mental health crisis, who sometimes arrive in our emergency departments needing ongoing mental health care and have sometimes some long waits in that area. So again, just looking at doing something different over on the east coast and Boston in relation to that risk. And there are lots of other schemes, as you'll see from the plan, that we're also delivering, but I just wanted the opportunity to just highlight three. In Lincolnshire, we're often, well, we're very proud that we work as a system and that is evident within this winter plan. And last week, we had a regional assurance visit from NHS England, who came over to Lincoln County and did an assurance process in relation to this plan. The initial feedback received is very, very positive and one of the feedback that they always give is around our ability to come together in Lincolnshire, to really work together, and hopefully you can see that evident within the plan. In addition to facilitate some of that, you'll see some detail around what we call a system coordination centre. That's an integrated care board, employed centre, but it is for the system in its name, it's a system coordination centre, and those were launched two years ago. Nationally, each system has a system coordination centre and it is kind of the heart of the NHS in Lincolnshire in that it is, if you think about a pilot in an aircraft and you've got all the controls, you can see everything that's happening across the system, that's what's happening in that system coordination centre, so we can see all the detail from the individuals phoning an ambulance or trying to access in, right the way through our hospitals, right the way through to discharge into our community hospitals, into our care home capacity, et cetera. So the aim there is to support the winter plan to ensure patients move through the system as much, as fast as possible. In addition, in the plan, you'll see a communication section, so the communication section really addresses that risk I've already talked about and builds upon the work we did last year in relation to communication with the public. Last year, we did some really bespoke work on how we communicate, so you will see us, as we always do, launch the plan in early December and do some general comms, but to really, and we learnt this through Covid, particularly through the vaccination programme, that different people in Lincolnshire, different parts of Lincolnshire, need to be communicated with in a different way. So what works in Gainsborough may not work in Stamford or Spalding or Skegness. So we have a very, very bespoke communication plan in the way we deliver the messaging, the way we engage with the population within those areas, and again, this is detailed within the plan. I think, do you want to add anything else, Claire? I'll give my colleagues an opportunity to come in if that's okay, but I will stop there because obviously the richness chair is within the questions. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the only thing I would add is, you know, on the risks that Rebecca's outlined, the new risks, some of those we've been able to mitigate a little bit, but some of them we haven't, and the GP collective action is one that you'll see in the plan. It's really difficult to predict what's going to happen there, but just to give assurance, I guess, is that we've got a, using the kind of emergency planning type framework, we have got an oversight of GP collective action, so on a daily basis, we're looking at data across the system and where people are accessing other services to see if we're seeing any trends, because it's quite difficult to see what's happening across 81 practices, but actually, hopefully, we'll be able to pick up trends and then respond to those. So we've got that cadence in place in order to manage what we are seeing as a result of that, so that's the only thing I'll add.
Thank you for your presentation. Okay, I'll open up, I've got councillor Smith first, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Given the decision by the current government around winter fuel allowance, what steps are being taken in case there are additional cases that you have to deal with this winter around those that have health issues due to being cold or not eating what they should eat? And secondly, and I'll rephrase this question because you've touched on it in terms of what you're doing around mental health this winter, but as you've already heard from my, in the previous item to the chairman's announcements, it's, shall I say, functionality is questionable, so are you confident that there is sufficient resource in place that during the winter that mental health needs can be met? Because obviously, winter is a very challenging time for people and is probably one of the worst times of year if you're suffering with mental health, as well as the normal worries added on top. Thank you.
Shall I start and then I'll pass to Rebecca? So just on mental health, I think what we're seeing, I know this isn't specifically here today and we can certainly share more information, we are seeing, both in Lincolnshire and across the country, unprecedented demand for mental health and we are trying to respond to that demand as best we can, and that's partly why we've put in what we've put in place over the east coast. So the service that we're looking to put in will operate from a physical base out of Skegness Hospital, but will cover the east coast and down to Boston, because what we're seeing is actually, we're managing it quite well in other parts of the county, but not in that part. We've also got within our mental health services, underpinning this plan, this is obviously the system level plan, services have their own winter plans as well, so that you can see the detail in here around mental health. So I think we're confident as we can be with the assumptions we've got on activity, but as you'll recognise, that is a little unpredictable, and as we've come out of Covid, we are seeing quite a different presentation in relation to that, so I think we're confident as best we can be. Don't know if you want to add anything on that one, Rebecca?
No, I don't think there's any additionality in relation to mental health. I mean, it is an ongoing, this plan is an agile plan, and I probably should have said that at the beginning, you'll notice it's got draft on it, it will go to our Integrated Care Board for sign-off, but it will remain agile. So one of the things we're currently doing is based on what we saw in October, which was slightly different than what we expected across physical health and mental health, we're checking this is still the right plan. So whilst we have a plan, clearly, we're not going to get into January and say, oh, hard cheese, this is our plan. It has to be an agile plan and we'll keep that totally under review. Would you like me to take the other question? So the fuel poverty, clearly, as I said, we're working as a system, so on our system calls, we have public health, we have all of those individuals to, where we're triangulating that data around particularly any issues in relation to public health. Specifically, fuel poverty, we have invested this year in warm spaces and food provision, particularly because we are aware that could potentially be an issue.
Thank you. I've got councillor Kendrick next, please.
Thanks, Jim. A couple of questions or clarifications, perhaps. I was interested in what you were saying about the, what I would call like an integrated call centre where people are appropriately referred. Could just clarify, is this just for the winter period or is this going to be ongoing throughout the year? And secondly, reading the report, there's obviously a reference to supporting staff and keeping staff healthy. What level of take-up is there amongst staff for the flu vaccine, for example? I don't know whether it should be really high, I always remember having my job when I was in the NHS, but I was just wondering how high that take-up was. Thanks, Jim.
Shall I take the first question? So the Integrated Call Centre, this is about bringing elements of our NHS together to work better together, so in direct answer, it is not something we'll just do for winter, it's the plan is longer term, but as with everything, we'll keep it under review, so if it doesn't work, then we're not going to keep it, but at the moment, of course, the early indications are that it is working. With regards to staff and vaccinations, of course, we have an absolute full delivery plan around staff vaccinations, and I know we're having the discussion prior to, and Claire has the exact numbers for you, because we thought you might ask.
Yeah, I haven't got the exact number, but what, which they are going to send to me, so we'll be able to share that with you, but what we are actually seeing is a lower uptake across health and social care staff than this time last year. That's not always unusual because last year, we saw a bigger uptake in November, so obviously we started the vaccine programme early, but I think that's similar in the population. I think people are a bit, you know, tired of vaccines in a way, and we are, which is why we're pushing the message, because prevention is better than cure, both for an individual but also for the family and contacts that people come in with. So we are doing a big push on vaccines across social care staff and health staff, but it is slightly under where we were this time last year. Conversely, in our over 75 population, we're ahead of where we were last year, and also in our care home population, which is really positive because they are obviously a very vulnerable cohort. From a vaccinations overall, we're one of the best performing systems in our region at the moment for the numbers of vaccines that we're doing, but we know that we need to do some further work on our staff vaccinations, which is in place.
Thanks very much for that. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got councillor Cleaver next, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the report, it's always good to see this time of the year. A couple of things just to pick up on, I notice on page nine, there is a reference to a new model for winter 24/25 is in development, and on page 14, that there is an ongoing review of PCN plans. Now, I'm just conscious that we're already in November now, I wonder if, and I don't know obviously when exactly this report was first written, is there any update on how you're getting on with the new model for 24/25 that's on page nine and the ongoing review of PCN plans on page 14? One other point, one of the responsibilities I have as a district level is emergency planning, so it's something that is very close to my heart, and I notice, and quite understandably, the report concentrates on winter illnesses, winter diseases and all that sort of thing, a very little reference in there to the effects of bad weather and obviously the conflation, if there is a bad weather incident of any major sort, coupled with the constraints that you have with additional admissions because of the usual expected illnesses, that there is a resilience in the system to deal with that. So, you know, if there were a major incident on the road because of snow, if we have a major flooding incident, you know, we have a lot of, we actually have more crowd events, for example, in the winter, you know, hundreds, if not thousands of people at Christmas markets and Christmas lights turn off, you know, and if that results in a greater number of falls, for example, because you've got a big crowd of people there, I'd like to have to see some reassurance that the resilience is there to deal with those sorts of incidents, and obviously, if you have bad weather on the roads, we have an issue of people's staff getting to work, we have an issue of ambulance drivers being able to attend and get home from their stations, possible interruptions of supply chain of medicines and all of that sort of thing. Again, that's all part of winter planning from my point of view, and again, there's no reference in the report to linking in with the Lincolnshire Resilience Forum and all of that and how that would work, so I'd welcome your comments on that. Thank you.
Yes, so I also have the responsibility for emergency planning for the ICB, so we haven't gone into that level of detail in this plan, but underpinning this, all of those plans that we work across the Lincolnshire Resilience Forum and with our partners are all in place, absolutely. In fact, only week before last, we did an exercise in relation to some of that, what we would do, it was a train crash simulation incident, so I would say that's kind of business as usual in our planning, so we do make reference to Met Office and weather forecasts within here, and obviously, that's part of what Rebecca talked about, the Agile Response and System Coordination Centre that we would undertake, so if we see that, we'll deploy as we always do. I think in Lincolnshire, we have a really great resilience forum and we work really well together, so absolutely, all of our plans that underpin this, whether it's mass casualty, whether it's, you know, flooding, bad weather, would all kick in underneath, and you'll know we're very experienced at that in Lincolnshire with floods and beasts from the east and various other things, and we learn the lessons of those each time. So I think we are resilient to be able to deal with those things as they come, but it's helpful feedback, actually, because maybe in future iterations, we'll just strengthen that in our plan, just to make that a bit clearer. On the PCN, so you're right, you know, this is a point in time, I think this draft actually has already been updated since it was written and submitted to you as it's going through our own internal governance. So in the context of GP collective action, we're doing the best we can in terms of working with all of our practices, in terms of what they can do to support winter, and actually, a lot of our practices are really proactive in that space, so the work that they're doing around trying to identify people that are vulnerable and at risk and make sure we've got proactive plans in place, not just from a GP perspective, but working with other partners in the local area, be that social workers, mental health workers and others. So quite a lot of that is in place already. It does vary across the county, I think that's fair to say, but it is ongoing work that they'll do all the way through winter, it's not a start and end point, and in fact, it's all the way through the year, because as you will know, our summer surge in winter can be as busy as our winter surge, particularly on the east coast, so we're really aware of that. And then in terms of the other one, I think that's the demanding capacity, oh, the acute respiratory hubs, okay. So yes, we did, well, Rebecca, you might want to come in on what we did last year and what we're doing differently this year on that.
So last year, we very much took the national model around establishing new sites and new hubs to deal with people who have existing respiratory disease where they're in exacerbation, so that we can help manage them through that specialist expertise. We found that actually, in our early evaluations, what we were seeing was the generally well population with some form of respiratory illness presenting into those services, which isn't what we set out to do. We're still working through what this year's model could look like, working with our general practice colleagues and primary care networks to understand how we can instead shift the model this year into proactive case finding for people with existing respiratory disease, find them before winter really sets in, help them understand what vaccinations are available to them, what they can do around proactive care and anticipatory medication, and then when they do exacerbate, help them into the right place for a specialist or general urgent response that can help them manage that exacerbation without needing hospital admission or hospital attendance.
Thank you for that. Just one practical follow-up. In terms of the GP action, if, as you say, you're monitoring, which is great to hear, if there is a major problem with people not getting appointments or being able to get appointments, what capacity do you have to increase the hours of UTC stroke mandatory units stroke GP out of our services and how quickly would you be able to respond to that?
So when we're looking at this now at the minute, to be honest, so we meet weekly to make sure that we're both monitoring the shift in demand and planning to deal with any increases. We're not just looking at increasing capacity in front door services, so UTCs and emergency departments, we're looking at increasing that capacity for virtual care, so we know that a lot of people that access primary care now can be dealt with in a virtual way, and just because they're way, and just because their general practice is very busy that day, doesn't mean we can't continue with that model. So we're working with our clinical assessment service very closely to try and get the people that have tried to access general practice into our CAS service first of all, to make sure that only those that really need that face-to-face care of a UTC or an emergency department go there and go to the right part of the service as well, so they get what they need with the right skill set.
Okay, thank you, and of course, we have got an item on emergency planning coming in January, so we can go a bit more in depth on that one. Councillor Scalise.
Thank you Mr Chairman, thank you ladies for the much welcomed report, I always look forward to being a community nurse. I just want to say first of all, a big thank you for the great delivery service and availability for appointments in Spalding for Covid and for the flu vaccination, particularly now we've got Knight Street Pharmacy that are offering the service, phenomenal, I live round the corner, and they coo every day there, and they get everybody in, it's a great service. And also to Munro Medical Centre, you know, as a community nurse, we've had appointments that have been offered on the day, which is fantastic, because I know some other areas are not getting that availability. The other question I'd like to ask you, I've had a couple of residents ask me, they're not registered carers, but they look after family members, one of them's in their 40s and one 50s, this is the people that they're looking after. They're not eligible for Covid, they're telling me, and if they have to have a Covid vaccination, they've got to pay for it, and they haven't got the money to pay for that. Thank you.
Thank you, so I think my advice to those people, if they are undertaking caring duties, then get themselves registered as a carer with their GP practice, as long as they're registered with their GP practice, and they just need to go in and talk to their GP practice.
I don't think they're professional carers, I think they're just doing it as a...
It doesn't matter, I mean, there are many, 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 I'll call them informal, carers across our county that are not necessarily registered, if that makes sense, but obviously, we want to keep those individuals well, they are an absolutely essential architecture, part of our architecture within the NHS to do exactly what I described as the cornerstone. So if they go along to their GP practice, explain the role that they're undertaking, the GP practice can register them on their system as a carer, and they will be eligible for both flu and Covid.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Mackinson Saunders.
Thank you Mr Chairman, well, my heart always sinks when I read something like service fragility along the east coast, because we always feel we're not getting a fair share, I think it's just always we say that. And sadly, you say you're going to put mental health provision in Skegness, that's as far away from me as Lincoln is from me. Grimsby's closer, I have no clue what's going on in Grimsby, we don't know, I don't know how closely you work with the Integrated Care Board up there, but you know, we can't shout loud enough that we really do need a lot more help on the east coast. To me, a lot, there's an awful lot that health prevention that Derek Ward does, because you know, you've asked about having the fuel stuff, but it's eating properly, it's so many other ramifications. And you were saying you did a mock-up of a train crash, well, I can tell, we don't have any railway, we have not had a railway where I live since 1970, so it's a bit academic really, but an awful lot of people trip and fall, because in Louth and the area around Louth, there are a huge proportion of elderly, our footpaths are in bad condition, they're not, we don't put salt down, and all of those things, we need to work closer with the districts to ensure that we are doing a better job. And those things do make a difference, because people are taking up time at the out-of-hours, but we're sent up to Grimsby, and I think the waiting times for a lot of those services, an A and E, is over 12 hours at the moment. I hear lots of reports as well that people are going into hospital and coming out with Covid, which isn't ideal either, is it? So I don't know how, but I think it's a good plan, and I'm glad you've got a plan, and I've written down lots of, highlighted lots of the bits, but like you say, who knows what's going to happen really, and you don't know if there's going to be another form of flu that comes along or whatever, whichever happens. But I do feel along the east coast, we do need better services, given that we've got so many elderly, we've got so many caravan dwellers and all the rest of it, so, but recruitment and retention is the big challenge for the NHS in Lincolnshire anyway, isn't it? But thank you for what you're doing, but please, can we have a bit more?
Yeah, thank you for your comments. When we say east coast fragility, it's not because we don't have the services we do, we just can't get the workforce, as you've just said, it's really, really difficult the further east we go to attract them. So we've got to think of more innovative ways of doing that, and we are doing quite a lot of work, it's a bit off topic with the university trying to grow our own in terms of staffing and working with local populations, but it's a systemic issue, isn't it, in Lincolnshire? The bit of work that we're doing, so when I said Skegness, Skegness is where they will be based, but they are east coast as a service, so I said that because they've got to have a base that they go to, where they come together as a team of individuals, and it's working overnight as well, and that's what we often see, it's the late evening, early evening where people struggle, and that's when we struggle to get workforce as well. So you know, we're really quite hopeful about this service, that it will make a difference and will be a good pilot for us. In terms of the other things you mentioned, I mean, the exercise, the planned national exercises that we have to do as part of emergency planning, and actually, it doesn't matter whether it's a train crash or a, you know, a bus crash or whatever, the process of what happens is what you're testing out, whether you can really be resilient and deal with an influx of casualties in one go, you know, whether it's aircraft or whatever, which obviously is a bigger risk for Lincolnshire. But we do test out other plans as well, but you're quite right about falls, we've done a lot of work on fall services, there's more we can do on falls, and in fact, we were talking about this only yesterday, working closely with Lincolnshire Fire and Rescue and other services, lives that support us around that agenda. But you're absolutely right, working with districts and county council on making sure our footpaths and roads are in good condition as well, we do have those conversations, but it's tricky, isn't it, for us all? Have I missed anything, you think Rebecca? No? But thank you for your comments, it's welcome.
Okay, thank you, I don't have anyone else that has expressed to speak, so I've got a number of questions myself, and if anyone thinks of any questions, then I'll bring you back in. But looking back to last year's plan, can you expand on what worked well and what did not, and what lessons have been learned and approaches changed for this year?
Shall I start off and then you can come in ladies? So Rebecca's already talked about one in terms of the respiratory hubs, and it's something we're quite mindful of in Lincolnshire, often when there's our national ideas, they might work in really big conurbations but don't always work in rural counties, and so we, you know, we tried it, we tested it, and now we're doing something different. I think what worked well was the, as Rebecca said, we're in, it was our first real winter of having the system control centre, so the year before, they started in December, so in reality, it was a couple of people trying to pull together a national specification at that time. So last winter was the first full operation of that system oversight, control, and being able to see what's happening right across the system. And I think that did make a difference, because you look at risk differently, and I've said this before when I've been here around urgent emergency care, people waiting in ED to be seen is not just an emergency department problem, people waiting for an ambulance isn't just an EMAS problem, it's all of us in health and care, we have to work together, and I think the strength of what we did last year, what worked well, was managing that and everybody feeling that responsibility. So when we did have to make decisions, we were able to evidence that, so we could see what's happening in the community as well as a hospital or a GP practice at any one time, so that made a big difference. I think we learnt that we need to be more responsive in terms of what's happening with respiratory infections, so we saw quite a different profile, didn't we, last year? So obviously, it's really difficult to plan for that, as Rebecca said, and we are planning for what we see this year, but what I think we'll do differently this year is we've already recognised October was very different for us, it was different across the country, but even more different in Lincolnshire, so we need to understand that. We actually saw less people go to hospital from an attendance perspective in Lincolnshire, but we saw more people conveyed into hospital that were acutely unwell than we did last October. So we need to understand what's driving that, because we may continue to see that. So I think it's our agile response to doing something different, rather than just setting a plan and just hoping that that works, I think is where we're quite different to last year. Don't know whether you want to add anything Rebecca?
I think one of the schemes that worked really well last year was our health professional single point of contact access, whatever we want to call it, so you'll be familiar with single points of contact, because that's something that rolls off our tongues quite easily, but we were well aware of, particularly our health professionals out in people's homes in the community, trying to navigate there, so then they have a patient who is unwell, but doesn't need hospital services, but needs support, needs a response, and to be able to navigate that, and I talk with, you know, I previously was a district nurse, so I absolutely talk with, you know, experience of this, it could take hours to actually arrange that. So we put in place a, almost like a one-stop shop, in reality, a single point of access for our community and other healthcare professionals, where they can ring one number, where that team will then take the responsibility for that patient. So it was about our productivity, it was about moving our staff through to have a greater impact on a greater number of people, and that's something we were able to evidence, and we've continued this year. So lots we've continued, lots we've discounted, because they haven't quite worked in the same way, but as Claire said, agility is the key for us as we move forward.
Okay, thank you, and it's welcome to see the continued move to get people home in a timely manner, but I've heard cases of no care plan being put in place prior to someone being released home, leading to the patient returning almost immediately, so what's being done to mitigate this? I've got one instance which I can pick up outside of here, where over three weeks, they bounced in and out of hospital consistently, still with no care plan.
Yes, I'm sorry to hear that, it's, we know that this happens on occasion, and it's really not good enough, we shouldn't be in that position, so we have, now, one of the things again that we've put in place is a transfer care hub that is actually supposed to manage all of the discharges out, to make sure that that absolutely doesn't happen, clearly that's not worked in this case. We also work really closely with North Lincolnshire and Gull and Enraf, because we recognise actually, people are not just discharged from Lincoln hospitals, they're discharged from other hospitals, and we work really closely with the local authority around care packages as well, so it shouldn't happen like that, we've got the processes in place, but I guess they're as good as how people use them, and if we do experience that, then you know, we need to look into that and deal with it. But I would also say, one of the things we've learnt about discharges is, we often put people into complex pathways that we don't need, so one of the successes of last year was our active recovery beds that we commissioned jointly with the local authority, to get people home and get them back into a position that they were in before they went into hospital, so that they can then go home, and they don't necessarily need high levels of packages at home, because again, they're really difficult to get, and particularly the further east you go, because of trying to get the workforce. So we're trying to do much more about preventing people deteriorating, supporting them to get back to where they were, so that they don't need the onward packages that they used to have before, and that was a real success last winter, and we continue, well, we continue with it all year round, but we have more of it available in winter, including transport.
Okay, thank you, I think in this instance, it was evenings and weekends which seems to be where the greatest difficulty seems to be. My next question is, the plan is wordy in places, and there are no action plans or targets included, is this normal practice, or if they are in place, can they please be shared with the committee? In turn, can we have an item at the end of the pressure period to see how the plan has worked as well, please?
Yeah, absolutely, so there's no specific winter targets, because they are the urgent emergency care targets that you've seen here previously when I've brought the recovery plan, so absolutely can share that with you. They're not changed, it's making sure that we're able to deliver on four-hour performance, all the constitutional targets that we should have, response times in the community, the amount of people that we have in virtual wards, and all of those others, so they do exist, happy to share those with you. And when we came, I can't remember when it was now, in the summer with the urgent emergency care update recovery plan, that has those targets in for the whole year, so they absolutely are there. What we do is we do a, what we call a winter lessons learned event, so we do that usually, it depends how winter falls, so last year we did it in May, because actually we were still experiencing winter in April last year, it was a long winter, wasn't it, and you'll all remember that from the weather and everything else last year. So I couldn't tell you when that will be, but as soon as winter is what we think is officially over, then we do do that, lessons learned, very happy to share that with the committee.
Thank you very much. And my final question is, on page 45 of the pack, it states that the risks remains that the NHS locally may be unable to mitigate all the risks to ensure patients receive safe, timely and accessible care. How worried should local communities be, and what assurance can you give?
Yeah, I think we have to state that, because we've talked, haven't we, already today, about some of the unknowns that we might face, and therefore it is a risk. I'm really confident that we've got a really good winter plan for Lincolnshire, and that we should be able to mitigate those, you know, the risks that we've talked through, provided the assumptions that we've made stay correct, and if they don't, what I'm also assured about is we've got a really good response in Lincolnshire, both within health and care, but also if we need to involve in the Lincolnshire Resilience Forum, that if we needed to pivot into something else, we've got the ability to do that, so that we can treat the most vulnerable and the most sick. So I'm confident that we've got all of the processes in place to manage it, but you know, it is always a difficult challenge, winter.
Thank you, in which case, I can't see anyone else indicating, so I'm going to move to a proposal. I propose that the representatives from NHS be thanked for sharing the information on the Lincolnshire Integrated Care Systems Plan for Winter, and that a report be requested on the outcome of the winter planning and the new county council term. Do I have a second for my proposal? Thank you councillor Hayes. All those in favour, please show. Thank you, that supported unanimously, and thank you very much for your presentation. We'll now move on to agenda item six, the Lincolnshire Pharmaceutical Needs Assessment. This item was circulated as part of the agenda pack on pages 51 to 54, and I'll hand over to Simon.
Thank you, thank you chairman, just to briefly outline for members of the committee who are fairly new, relatively new, every three years, three years or so, there's a requirement for the Health and Wellbeing Board to, Lincolnshire County Council's Health and Wellbeing Board, to prepare a pharmaceutical needs assessment. So those three years have come round, and there is a plan to launch a consultation on the PNA, as it is abbreviated to, beginning in the new, early in 2025. The document itself is quite extensive, and there is a sort of, although it is summarised on page 52, the key point in that is that the document highlights gaps in provision of pharmacies, and as it then goes on to state, it's not a commissioning document, but it is used by organisations, healthcare organisations, to look at pharmacy provision and try to improve pharmacy provision in the county. The main point today though, is to state in accordance with the timetable, which is on page 53, we are looking to set up a working group today, so seeking volunteers, and that would meet on one occasion towards the end of January, perhaps early February next year, over, you know, over teams, and that meeting would then go through the detail of the document, prepare a response, and ideally, we would put that response through the committee, for the committee to sign off. So hopefully, we could do that by the 12th of February meeting, but it does depend on timing. So that is really all I need to say, I'm happy to try to answer questions, but it's not my area, area of expertise, the main purpose today is to, is just to get volunteers for a working group, so I'm trying to sell this, I'm perhaps not doing a very good job, but yeah, it's just one meeting, maybe an hour or so, but thank you, thank you chairman.
Thank you Simon, do we have any questions? It's a shame Simon was looking forward to, oh councillor Mackinson Saunders.
Well, I just wondered, we have so many scattered communities in, I'll have to speak for the east again, well, perhaps all over, lots of Lincolnshire, and how provision is sorted out for people living in these scattered communities, because it is a huge challenge, and I wondered what other places we could... Because it is a huge challenge and I wondered what other places we could look at that had a similar problem and how they overcome it, or if they don't overcome it really.
So in effect, comparing the Lincolnshire document with documents in other rural counties, maybe? Well, that's perhaps something I can certainly raise that issue. I mean, one of the issues you've sort of touched on there is that a large number of GP practices are dispensing pharmacies. And I think this issue will be explored at the meeting in December, when we have representatives from the Lincolnshire Pharmaceutical Committee, as well as from the Integrated Care Board, talking about a number of the government initiatives such as Pharmacy First, and the fact that that is not necessarily available if you have a dispensing GP prac... Well, it isn't actually, not necessarily, it is not available in a dispensing GP practice. So there is a, that, I mean, that's a potential gap in provision, but I'm not sure there is a way around this because most dispensing pharmacies are locate, well, they're in the same building, aren't they, in most instances? I don't know if that's a helpful answer, but I can certainly make a note of the issue about rural, other rural counties PNAs. Thank you, chair.
Yeah, thank you for your question, councillor Mackinson's on as I'm volunteering. Okay, in which case, yeah, it will be on teams undoubtedly, so. But if there's no further questions, then I'm going to propose that the proposed timeline and plan to produce pharmaceutical needs assessment 2025 be noted, and that a working group be established to review and respond the formal consultation. And I am looking at volunteers at this point. We will put it out on email as well because I'm acutely aware of the absence of quite a few members today, so I think it's important they get that opportunity. Thank you, councillor Smith, our volunteer, councillor Mackinson's on as, councillor Burke, thank you, and councillor Wooton. So we've got a number, have you got those all down, Simon? Thank you. Okay. In which case, I don't know if we've got our presenters yet for agenda item seven, Simon, have we?
I'm afraid, chairman, I've asked them to arrive around 11:30, but they are attending in person. I will perhaps, if I could just do the work programme and then I can perhaps see if I can get them here earlier, if that's okay, unless you wanted to just pause now.
No, I think in terms of streaming, it's probably best to try and go through with the work programme and try and get them here a bit quicker.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to save a break in the recording. So, yeah, we'll move on to the work programme and then bounce back to agenda item seven. So, yeah, over to you, Simon.
Okay, thank you, chairman. So with the items for the 4th of December, the items one and two on the list, Pharmacy First and the Prescription Medicine are, will in effect be one item because the paper from the Pharmaceutical Committee will cover both those activities, both those issues, as well as other issues as well. We've also have the GP provision item and the Stanford engagement exercise on that committee's agenda. And I, we, all I would say, I'm not going to go through every line of the January, February, March, but as is stated at the top of page 74, we then enter a hiatus, which I've just, I've realised is 13 weeks between the meeting on the 12th of March and the committee's next meeting on the 11th of June. And just to explain for people who may be listening online, the county council is having an election on the, I think it's the 1st of May, and there is, because of the pre-election period, the NHS will not participate during, for the April meeting, where we should be okay for the 12th of March, because that's before the period begins, before nominations are requested. We then have a break also in May and then we resume once again, I think I say, on the 11th of, 11th of June. So that means that it may be that some of the items that are on the list, depending on other factors, may have to be put back into the new county council term. But yeah, it's, I mean, certainly if the committee, for example, were to consider the next item and prefer a feedback on that before the end of the council term, we would have to try and slot that in at one of those three meetings. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Simon. Any questions on the work programme? Obviously, anything that crops up from the next item will pick up upon and it'll go in anyway, so. Any questions at all? No, thank you. In which case, Simon, you're going to try and see if you can get them here quicker. And so I'll have to pause for the moment, I think, just.
There seems to be not a lot on the agenda for the 2nd of February. And surely if there's going to be 13 weeks between stopping and starting, we might be able to have something else on the agenda for the 2nd of February.
Yeah, to be fair, it's always fairly light as we try and slot things in and try and fit it around the NHS, but we will endeavour to do so. And I did discuss with Simon the potential that if we do find we've got a rather large work programme there, that we may well try and actually extend a couple of the dates and maybe have to go into the afternoon if there is time pressure type events there. So, but we'll see, unfortunately, the NHS just will not engage during a position of further. And it does, yeah, and it does cause obviously a backlog of work realistically. So we'll take a brief pause now while we wait for the next speaker and then reconvene. So, thank you. Okay, welcome back after that short pause from the meeting. We're now on agenda item seven, non-emergency patient transport. This item was circulated as part of the agenda pack and is on pages 55 to 70. In September, the committee raised several items with the service, which are covered in today's report. As in September, we have one representative from the ICB, the commissioner of the service, and one representative from EMAS, the provider of the service. I'd like to welcome our presenters, Joy Weldon, head of Non-Emergency Patient Transport for the East Midlands Ambulance Service, NHS Trust, and Tim Fowler, Assistant Director of Contracting and Performance, NHS Lincolnshire Integrated Care Board. If I can hand over to you just to run through the report for about 10, 15 minutes, and we'll take questions at the end. Thank you. Sorry, Tim, I've just forgot to say if you compress the speaker in front of you, bring it towards and then just knock it off when you finish speaking. Thank you.
Okay, so take the report as read and thank you for inviting us back today. We had some suggestions following the last attendance here as to what we should include in the report and hopefully we've covered off all of those suggestions in the report that you've got with you today. I just want to take you through a number of aspects of the report. So in the background section of the report, we've covered the approach to the contract duration. And I've basically set out that in the NHS, we are looking at longer-term contracts across all of our contract base. That's supported by something called the Provider Selection Regime, which came in in 2023. It applies to all health services and it supports more of a partnership approach for healthcare contracts, and it also supports the kind of longer-term idea of contracts without the need to re-procure. That doesn't mean we won't re-procure, we can. We can have sanctions in the contract, this is an NHS standard contract. There are clauses in the NHS standard contract which allow us to put performance notices in against providers. There are elements in that standard contract that allow us to put an end to the contract where there is a breach by the provider. It's not something that we would use lightly, that it is that sanctioning there. There is also something in the contract where it says that we can, for no fault of the provider or no fault of the ICB, we can give a no-fault termination notice and the notice period in this contract is 12 months. So I just wanted to highlight that. I've also put in the background the rationale for us using a local incentive scheme rather than using hard KPIs within the contract. I think generally it is harder for a provider to deliver against a local incentive scheme than it is against hard KPIs. And I think we've tried to explain our approach here on the back of experience with the two previous contracts that we've had, the one with Thames Ambulance Service, HTG, and the previous one with NSL. The experience we had from our patient and stakeholder feedback, which we did extensively before we re-procured, and basically what we've tried to do is take account of what's important to patients and to take account of kind of perverse incentives that we can sometimes get if we put hard KPIs in. So an example of that might be if there's a journey collection time of 60 minutes and the collection is 15 minutes later than that, the patient may feel that that's okay. So we want to focus on patient satisfaction, we want to focus on the satisfaction of our healthcare practitioners rather than have KPIs, hard KPIs within the contract. As we discussed last time, EMAS have a number of internal service delivery principles and they're set out, the performance against those is set out in the report and I'll come on to that. We were also asked to give a summary of the interest that we've had from NHS England in this approach. I've done quite a lot of work with the National Non-Emergency Patient Transport Implementation Team, and this is, this approach is gathering very much interest among ambulance service providers, among commissioners across the country. And I've also done presentations, I worked on the National Transport Category Council and they were very interested in this approach. I think there is a recognition in the NHS that patient transport has probably not worked well over the last years and still perhaps isn't working well in a number of areas. We'll come on to the SDPs, but this different approach, I think, will be increasingly adopted across the NHS over time by commissioners and by providers. So it is setting out a scene on that. We've put in the report information on performance, updated performance to September on the service delivery principles. delivery principles. Three out of the eight have been met up into September, one out of the eight is very close to being met, and four out of the eight are off track. I think last time, there was a lot of debate about the fast-track metric, and it's pleasing to note that for both August and September, that has hit target, and we expect that to continue. In terms of oversight, we monitor SDPs through monthly meetings with EMAS. EMAS, as set out in the report, has its own processes, and the ICB has its own process to monitor. We do monitor all of these, we do take scrutiny on these, and we do expect them to improve. So we're working closely with EMAS, and Joy, you may want to come in a bit later on on how we are looking to improve. I think we do recognise that the four out of the eight, and particularly the metric on discharges, needs some real work on it, and we expect that to happen over winter. You all, I think, have heard in the previous item to the committee that we've put some winter pressure money into patient transport. We expect that to help to improve the position over winter. I have also put in the report that we've got on issue on data where if a patient is collected at a particular time, booked for a particular time, and the patient isn't collected for a variety of reasons at that time, we still are keeping to the original collection time, and that's skewing some of the data, and we're working with EMAS to do work on that. So hopefully, that gives an idea of how we are looking at the SDPs and how we're using them. There is comprehensive reporting through, both to EMAS, through their Service Improvement Board, through their trust board, through their quality committee, and that's mirrored within the ICB. I've put in the report detail of the local incentive scheme, there are three elements to the scheme, so there is zero tolerance on rebeds, there is social value, and a satisfaction for healthcare practitioners and for patients. And I've set out how we monitor that. You have two tables linked to that. One is the Friends and Family Test, which we use to monitor patient satisfaction and the response rates that we get. The response rates set out in the table are similar to the national response rates for other services, so it needs to go up. We are working with EMAS to try and pull that up. But you've also got the satisfaction, the results of the Friends and Family Test, and I think I've set out in the report that EMAS are slightly above the national rate that's reported for other patient transport services. Just want to caveat that, the national data that we get on the satisfaction through Friends and Family Test is only for NHS patient transport services. I suspect that non-NHS patient transport services have a lower satisfaction than the NHS ones do. That's a suspicion, I can't prove it, but there are some indicators. And then we've gone on to complaints and compliments. We were asked to do a comparison with the previous provider for complaints, formal complaints on a six-month period up to the end of September. EMAS have had ten formal complaints. The previous provider, in the last six months of their operation, had fifty-one formal complaints. Compliments to the service are similar rates, so just wanted to pull that out. And then we were asked to put in some comments on eligibility. You have the eligibility criteria that is a national eligibility criteria, I've included the link to that within the paper. I've also done an extract of the key elements of that eligibility criteria. To give a kind of an example of this, in July, there were five thousand and seventy-three requests for patient transport received by EMAS. They accepted ninety-seven percent of those, thirty-two of those that were rejected then appealed, and nine of those were approved. So eligibility is quite a key issue. The national direction is that patients should, as much as possible, make their own way or make their way with relatives to their appointments. I think that the numbers that we're seeing here, the five thousand requests in a month, is probably comparable to similar sized ICVs, but there is a lot of work being done at national level to try and reduce the reliance on patient transport. So that's a kind of a whistle-stop tour of the report. Happy to take any questions, unless, Joy, there's anything you would want to add.
Yeah, just in terms of the service delivery principles that we've touched on already, and for us as an organisation, these are really important to us in terms of the transparency of where we are as a service and how we're being able to operate, and also that opportunity to be able to review those patient groups that are sitting just outside of that, so that we can then start to really understand, so what happened, what do we need to do differently, and also who do we need to work with. So this is a real system approach in terms of being able to support all our patients whilst ensuring that we're able to maintain flow, particularly from a discharge perspective, and that greater understanding, and some of that from an example in terms of fast-track. So once we're starting to really understand, okay, so why did that journey fail? We're able to understand why and what it is we need to do to make things different. And so from that perspective, it was a simple case of terminology between different organisations, and so being able to put those things in place then enables us to be able to perform better and provide that better service for other patients. And there's been a big challenge, I think patient choice is really significant, and we need to acknowledge that as well. And from August twenty-three last year, that really came into fruition, and so, you know, a patient can choose whichever hospital they want to go to if there's a shorter waiting list, for example, but they're still eligible for transport if that's the case and they meet the criteria. And so there's often some quite lengthy journeys in terms of mileage as well as time out of the county. So we're looking at how we can manage and support those patients differently. And also, as part of our improvement programme, other trusts, and as Tim mentioned, you know, this is a challenge not just within the East Midlands, it's nationwide. And so, you know, we have other ambulance trusts that are starting to come to us as well, looking at what we're doing, looking at how we've set up our improvement programmes, looking at the work that we've put within those work streams, and the impact that that's having, so that we can share learning across ambulance trusts as well, which is a real positive. So there's still work to do, there's still some areas for improvement there. And as Tim touched on, we've got the winter scheme, which is really positive throughout the winter, so we've got some additional resources to support that patient flow, but also an opportunity for joint roles to have that true collaborative work in throughout the system, and that we're not sat on the peripheries trying to manage this, we're doing this jointly as a system.
Okay, thank you for that. I've got councillor Smith first, please.
Thank you, chairman. Thank you both for coming physically, because I know it takes time out of your schedules, and I know you're both very busy. I read this with interest, chairman, because as you can remember no doubt, I think we're all quite vocal on the subject. One thing I find perplexing, and you used it actually, Tim, in your explanation to us, is around, not using KPIs, is around the sixty-minute timeframe and resource potentially being used in a another means if a patient's gone over that timeframe. To my mind, that's, with the greatest respect, that's not a justification. If you word KPI appropriately, so you can have a KPI, yes, they must do it in sixty minutes, but then you also would have something within that that says you cannot then reallocate resource on the basis of being outside that, and if we find you have, we will then hit you with the financial stick of a pain metric, and that pain metric is going to be worse for you than just being outside the sixty minutes, because that's how you would, I mean, we have KPIs in various contracts, and that's how you would mitigate that. So I don't see that as a justification, I'm sorry, I really don't. And I still, certainly from a health scrutiny perspective, have serious concerns how we are going to scrutinise this. I can't see how we can, because they're actually, in the nicest possible way, it's, there's nothing hard and fast, it's a feeling, there's nothing really codified and there to say and really bite down to and say, actually, no, you failed in this respect or this respect. And the data is helpful, and that it lays, shall I say, some of the potential fears that were expressed, but the issue for me is how you scrutinise this, and I don't see how you can. The other point I wish to make, chairman, and I don't know how this is monitored around the level of complaints since EMAS has taken over, part of me is curious, is that because of service? And there may be an element of that, and I don't dispute that, but is that also because, and please, Joy, correct me if I'm wrong, that your branding for your non-emergency patient transport is very much the same as your, or similar to your emergency transport and your liver reason, et cetera? So is it a perception of, well, it's the National Health Service that's doing this for me, it's not a private company, I can't really complain, because actually, they've got other things they need to do. And I don't know how much of that is the case and how much of that isn't, chairman, but I'd be very interested to know, and whether we ever can, I don't know, chairman, but I'd be very interested to know in that, because I think that would be an element to it, because you're much more, you know, you're much more likely to complain of a private company that's done this service than, say, if you think it's part of the National Health Service, because, you know, as we all do, we all know how stretched they are and how difficult things are for them, but those are my comments, chairman, thank you.
Yeah, can I come back on that? Yeah, I actually think quite the opposite. I think from an NHS perspective, people have really high expectations, and as an ambulance trust, people also have that additional expectation that we'll be there as quickly as possible and, you know, within the parameters of the health service. So I do disagree with that. However, we do have some really good people within our teams who constantly contact patients directly. We don't shy away from if we've not done something right, then, you know, we need to take a step back and look at what it is we need to get right for next time. We meet patients, we talk to patients' relatives, families, we will be incredibly transparent about that, and so we also have really good links from system providers as well who will contact us on behalf of patients, and so we have that really good relationship. So I do think it is quite the opposite to that.
If I could just briefly add to that, we really encourage complaints, comments, compliments, both through the ICB and through the service. We've done a sense check with Health Watch as well, and Health Watch are not reporting representations that they've had on the service to us. I think there was one in September that they drew to our attention. There are a number of months in the past, six months, where there's been nothing raised by Health Watch. I think the point you're raising about, do people want to complain more for the NHS service or less than they would for a private provider? I can draw a comparison between the independent sector acute hospitals that we use and the NHS. Generally, there is a much greater propensity of patients to complain for the NHS service rather than for the private hospitals. Now, that may be, there are all kinds of factors within that in terms of service delivery, what the feeling is, in terms of across the whole dimensions of the administration, do you feel you're getting good service, have you got the right outcome? But that's a really difficult one for us to give a tangible answer on. Coming back to your point about how difficult it is perhaps for the committee to scrutinise the service, we will be absolutely open and honest with any dimension of the service, and we're happy to report that. We're happy for members of the committee to come out and look at the service, so more than happy, we'll be completely open about it. I take your point to a point about how we frame the sanctions within the contract. We'll have a look at that, I'm not going to promise it will change, but certainly happy to have a look at it.
Okay, thank you. Before I bring in councillor Kendrick, the only other thing I would add is, as I said in the last meeting, I think there's an element of, it's been an issue with the non-emergency patient transport service for so long, that people have probably just given up on it. And I think that that's another issue when you start looking at complaints and compliments. Councillor Kendrick, please.
Thanks, chairman. Looking at the local incentive scheme, I see that it says that NHS England issued guidance in twenty twenty-two, and it included guidance on having social value as one of the things there. Is this mandatory? Because it strikes me as something, it's very nebulous, social and economic and environmental wellbeing, I would have thought you had enough workload to do delivering, actually getting people to hospital and back again, than entering into all that sort of nebulous area of social and economic wellbeing. So I was just wondering whether it's something that's mandatory or it's something that's been selected locally to do.
Sorry, Tim, would you just mind putting the microphone on? It's just, with it being streamed, they can't pick up on the comments otherwise, and if you could move the microphone a bit more towards you, Matt, thank you. Thank you.
Certainly. So yes, it is mandated by NHS England. There is a plethora of guidance that supports the high level that I've put within the report. My board at the ICB is very keen on social value. That supports a view that the NHS is something called an anchor institution. So basically, the NHS has a role to play within communities and within building strong local communities beyond just delivering health services. Lots and lots and lots of guidance on this I can point you to. So yes, it is mandated, it does make our lives a little more difficult than perhaps they might otherwise be, but I think we've got to look at the kind of the bigger picture on this one. My board is very interested in it. The NHS guidance, which is mandated, says that if we're scoring a procurement, we've got to have ten percent of the score linked to social value. My board has said that needs to be fifteen percent within ICB procurements. So it is challenging for us.
Thank you. Unlike other stats where you can look at number of deliveries or whatever collections, it seems, I don't know how you quantify social value, you know, how they've improved the wellbeing of the people of Lincolnshire, apart from getting them to appointments and from appointments, so it strikes me as gain is rather nebulous.
So if I can, a lot of this is about input rather than output, so a lot of this is about how our providers work with their supply chain. A lot of this is about how do we try and make sure that any of the supplies that our providers use are largely based within Lincolnshire. It's about supporting people through employment, so east coast is very much an issue there, trying to recruit people locally rather than trying to recruit people nationally. So it's that kind of focus that we're trying to get into, and I know, Joy, you've done lots of work in EMAS to try and do that with the bases and how you get the vehicle serviced, and so it is challenging for us, but it is something we are trying to embrace.
Thanks, chairman. I can understand wanting to shop locally, as it were, I can see the importance of that, it's just some of the other issues I think are a little bit nebulous, but thanks very much for the explanation, appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Hager, did you express yet? Thank you.
Thank you. Joy, you said in your report that for the winter, that you've put in additional resources. Could you explain what those resources are, please?
Yeah, so we've got five additional resources, and they're located across the county, and they'll be solely focused for discharge, discharges, and the aim is for us to, and as you can see, though, it does link in with one of the service delivery principles around us providing that real timely service for patients to be discharged, particularly over winter, as we know. You know, that's really important for those bed hours to be released and to maintain that flow throughout the system. So they are dedicated solely for use within the system for discharging patients and within the community. So, you know, we're also focusing not just on the acute, but in the community hospitals, and also those services, provide a service which is slightly unique in terms of a patient not leaving the house but needing some support with manual handling in their own homes to avoid an admission into hospital. And so those resources, we'd started to use that initiative last year, and it worked really well, so that we're preventing people going into the acute and community settings as well. So we'll report on that separately to this, so that we can really see and understand the impact that that has throughout those winter months as well.
Thank you. I have got another question, a little bit close to home. I have a friend that is undergoing chemotherapy for breast cancer at the moment, living at Grantham and having to get over to the pilgrim. To start with, provided the transport, and I think after the third time, she was told she wasn't eligible for it anymore. she wasn't eligible for it anymore, to make her own way there, which you're not supposed to drive when you're on chemotherapy. Could you explain, or probably you don't know, but could you sort of explain why that would be?
There could be a number of reasons, so unless I've got that specific information, which I'm happy to take outside of this if that, if that's helpful, is that the questioning is around, is somebody able to get to their appointment by their own means, friends, family first? And so unless I've kind of got the detail around what was said on the call, I'm not sure. There isn't, there isn't a blanket eligibility for everybody who's undergoing chemotherapy. We work with the hospitals so that we know who, who is not able to travel either on public transport or with somebody else and needs to travel through transport services. And so there's, there's lots of different reasons why that, that may be, but I'm more than happy to take that away and have a look if you want to give us some details.
Okay, right, thank you very much, thank you.
Yeah, just building on from that, can I ask you briefly to outline what the appeal process entails and how long it takes?
Yeah, so there's a, there's an immediate opportunity to submit an appeal and so our call-taking team will take that detail on, on the phone. We then have a time period within 48 hours, it can be sooner if the appointment's short notice as well, so we will adjust those times and that will then be undertaken by one of our managers. If that's either upheld, we will then, you know, give the opportu, we'll do feedback to the individual personally and so if that's then challenged further, there is a, there is a clinical discussion had then, so we have a clinical lead within PTS who's a clinician and they will also review the case and manage, manage that individual and look at, look at the process. There are times where it's upheld, there are times where the initial decision's then been overturned or changed because there's additional information come to light, there's more clinical information that's been shared that may not have been drawn out at that first phone call.
Any about yet, councillor Anderson Saunders.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, unusually, I'm going to be really sympathetic because I think you've got a rotten job and trying to please everybody all the time is not easing. I read the statistics and, you know, you can't do things at an hour, with an hour's notice. I have every sympathy with you, we live in a large rural dispersed county and trying to hit all these things is, is just blimmin' difficult, isn't it? And you're not a taxi service and I think people should be jolly, jolly pleased that they're getting a free service, you know, and people don't appreciate how difficult it is for you to juggle doing it properly. And I really do feel sorry for you and I think you're doing a good job, I'm sure there are bits that don't work, but if you're working towards getting right, this social value, I shake my head about this stupid political correctness about, I would expect anybody to trade locally and I know the ambulance service uses the same garage for their fuel as I use, so I do know where I live, it does work, but I mean, for goodness sake, haven't you got better things to do with addressing our health needs? And I just really, really worry about all of this, but well done to the ambulance service because it is not an easy job and if you're only getting an hour turnaround time, how dare people criticise you like they do? So I do have sympathy with you and, you know, just keep working hard for Lincolnshire because I think we do appreciate what you do and sometimes we can't be too hard on you and I'm sure people will challenge me on that.
Could I just come back on the, on the social value point? There are lots of initiatives that we are mandated to implement by NHS England as an ICB and as a provider trust, so EMAS, we don't get a choice in that, so we are responding rather than initiating. There is some things that we want to do which kind of, we get distracted by some of the, I need to be careful what I say, we need to get distracted by national policy, that's not different to services that, some of the services that the local authority provides. We have, we have political masters, so we have to respond to them.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, if I may, I was going to say, the complexity of patient transport is quite key to this. We've tried to get a balance between making sure that patient transport works across the county, there are times when it doesn't, we'll be absolutely honest about that, but if we get a request for 24 stretcher discharges on a Friday afternoon at three o'clock with all of those wanting to be discharged at four o'clock, with the best will in the world, no patient transport provider is going to do that unless they have lots of vehicles and lots of crews sitting around doing nothing. So we do have to prioritise, the service has to prioritise. We're trying to work with the hospitals to get this better, we're trying to improve the pre-booking, like booking the day before, because that allows EMAS to schedule a lot better. But this service is not a simple service, you could get a collection in north of Lincolnshire where the vehicle is delayed because the patient isn't ready on time, that vehicle, they then be scheduled to go to Lincoln County to pick up a patient, that patient may not be ready on time. So it's a really complex set of dynamics that the, the service has to deal with and I'd say we're very happy for anybody from the committee or anybody else to come out and have a look at how it operates on a day-to-day basis.
Mr. Chairman, there are often pharmacy delays and I know a lot of people have spoken to me, they've had to wait hours for their tablets before they're allowed to go home. How can you plan for all of these things? So I, you know, I do feel sorry for you.
Can I just come on and say thank you for that comment, but, but I think what's important is around that working together and you're absolutely right around some of those challenges that are outside of PTS to resolve, but they're not outside of us as a system to work together on and doing and getting right and so that's for us what this is all about and trying to get the best transport service for Lincolnshire by working together and trying to break some of the, the things that have always happened and try and do things slightly differently.
Okay, thank you. I'm a bit longer in the tooth and I will be having a completely different view, but for six years of excuses, I think, you know, having seen it is what I will go with, but I'll ring councillor Burke in first, please.
Thanks very much, Chair, and it's happy to compliment you on what you do. Of course, unfortunately, our job is to scrutinise, so sometimes we have to be a bit harder than we'd want to be and I think Chair's making that point. Just drilling down a bit on this issue of transport, some of us of a certain age are used to a concept that that transport just occurred and if you go back to the 50s and 60s, that would be true and unfortunately, some of us do go back to that period and if we don't think about it. So my, my question really is around communications, so, I mean, are you happy that patients in the first instance have the means in a reasonable way, you know, where say 80% of patients know where to go for the information when they're accessing transport so they can find out really before they ask? You know, and if it's clear, you know, you've got access to transport, you should use that first unless there's really good reasons and there can be economic reasons. So that's one question and similarly, you've touched on hospitals and I guess other services that are putting pressure on you, is information available to them as well as professionals to understand? There are times when they shouldn't ask for the service and there are times when they should be more precise.
Yeah, so from a, from the communication perspective, and this is what's really important about the improvement programme because that was actually discussed last week around a discharge process, so do, you know, are people aware of what they need to also think about and what's available to them or what are the alternatives before using transport? Or so if you are the first, you know, the discharges are normally booked for them, but also there's a, there's a whole education programme that we're, that we're undergoing with, with our system partners as well in terms of looking at journeys, for example, that we've gone, gone to where the patient's either not ready or our highest number for aborted journeys or where patients have already made their own way home. So we've, we've gone for the patient and the patient's gone and so that's not because they're all, that we're delayed, they've just chosen to, to take that route. And so that improvement programme, what we're doing through that is really scrutinising that as well. So we've already, as I touched on at the last committee, starting to do a programme of communication and information around the impact that has, particularly if we go to an out-of-area hospital, for example, it's a lot of mileage and a lot of time where somebody could have just called and cancelled, so a whole suite of communication and information is part of the programme because you're absolutely right, people need to know and it's, it's, patients need to know, but also our system partners as well as when it's appropriate.
Councillor Burke, microphone, please, thank you.
Thank you. You also mentioned perhaps we should come and have a look at the service. I think you can't beat actually site visits, those of us in planning, you know, I think that's a really good idea if I may say, thank you.
Yeah, I'm more than happy for my details to be shared as well, so, so happy to arrange that and have people visit, I think it's important to then see the complexities and how we do things as well.
Thank you for the offer and I think if we could do it probably through Simon so that wouldn't overwhelm you too much in terms of everyone rushing to email you, but thank you very much for the offer. And I must say, I've seen on social media where you've been asking people to actively, you know, make sure that they say that they don't need the journey and so on, so I do commend you for what you've done there certainly. However, I'm going to now move into my questions and I note in the report that the number of complaints has decreased since 2023. However, I'm still concerned that 50% of the feedback, including the PALS data, is showing dissatisfaction with the service. So can you please expand on what further is being done to change this, please?
Yeah, so, so the negative feedback, again, it comes from timeliness, so that, that is the main target and the work that we're trying to do is around creating and ensuring that we're as efficient as we possibly can be with the resources that we have available to us. And so there's the campaign around the reduction of our aborted journeys because that's where the biggest release of capacity will come from by ensuring that we're not wasting any journeys and so that's, that's part of that improving communication, ensuring that we have the correct journey home time as well. So, you know, we can go for a patient, patient not be ready, we go back again and we go back again. And so, so what we're, what we're looking at is ensuring that we're, we have the correct data within the system that's booked at the time. So sometimes patients can give us, you know, they say their appointment will take an hour, but, you know, it does more than often than not run over that and so what we're doing at the moment is ensuring that what we call throughput times, so the time for the clinic to take place, the appointment to take place is the correct one from the outset so that we're starting to, to be slick and efficient and reduce those opportunities or risks that we're going back time after time. So, so that is, that is the main element for the, for the complaints is around timeliness on collection.
Thank you. My next question is, although I see minor improvements on the service delivery principles on page 66, overall they seem stagnant or getting worse, for example, 2.3, 2.4, 3.1 and 3.2. So how confident are you that without KPIs and their associated penalties, we will see any real improvement when you come back to committee in say March? And if they have not improved, what are you going to do next?
So I think in terms of KPIs and the financial sanctions, there are financial sanctions within the contract, so let me just reiterate that. I don't disagree, the facts are here in the report, so we have a number of processes in place with EMAS to try and pull these up. We will take a view, if this doesn't improve by March, we'll take a view about what further sanctions we want to take. There are a number of things we can do, the contract allows us to put in a formal performance notice, that has a process that is then started by that formal performance notice going in. I think that the ethos of this is that EMAS are not trying to deliver a bad service, they are trying to improve. All of the staff in EMAS are signed up to doing the best they can for patients, we're all signed up to trying to do that and we're all signed up to trying to improve these service delivery principles. So I absolutely take the point that this is not good enough, we think we need a time to get it improved, we'll come back when the committee wants us to and if it's not improved by then, I think the ICB will be on top of this as will EMAS before the committee is, I hope that's the case.
Okay, thank you. On page 63, the report states that EMAS is looking to increase the number of patient responses, but there will be no significant changes in the short term. Can you elaborate on the plans to increase responses from patients and timescales, please?
Yeah, so this, this is quite a challenging one in terms of gaining feedback and so what we also have to consider is we use technology, so we use the text messaging service to do that, however, what, as we can see there, that we would, we would like more feedback and more specific feedback as well and so what we're looking to do over the coming months is, is some actual face-to-face engagement and communication with people, our patients, you know, how are we doing, what is it that you'd like to see and what is it that we need to do differently? And I think we'll be able to get that engagement in a more constructive way as well, face-to-face and I think we need to do more of that in our engagement plan and so, you know, while ever technology is great, sometimes there's a little apathy in that, particularly if you use the service multiple times and you've already completed one, perhaps don't want to complete that again, it's anonymous and, and so, so what we would like to do is, is to start to get some more targeted engagement and so, so that will be our plan going forward in the coming months as well, so some local engagement.
Thank you. And my final question is, and I'm not overly sure if this is for here or for elsewhere, but what is EMAS's policy and protocol on deceased people, say if it's a suspect death and it needs to go to the hospital, what do EMAS do in that circumstance?
And they need to go to the hospital, sorry.
Because it's, yeah, it's not your normal death, it's a suspect one, there could be something more there than just someone's been, you know, passed away, deceased, whatever.
Oh, right.
What is the protocol? What is the process EMAS follows?
So that, that would be from an A and E service perspective and they have their policies and procedures which is unique to each individual case, so if there's a suspected case and something that is out of the ordinary, then there will be set procedures in place to follow around informing different agencies.
Okay, thank you. And then what I'm going to do now is move to a proposal. So I'd like to propose that the representatives from the NHS be thanked for presenting the additional information on the patient transport service and including its contractual background and service delivery principles and that the committee's concerns with the performance against the service delivery principles be reiterated and a request be made for a further report to the committee in March 2025. Do I have a second to my proposal? Thank you, councillor Sylacy. All those in favour, please show. I supported unanimously and once again, thank you very much for your attendance today.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, that brings the meeting to a close, in which case, thank you all very much. Thank you.